Exit.
Exit, executive session.
Now, second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Is there any action?
No.
No action.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, well, we're moving to the Board of Commissioners.
All right. Have a good day, Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
Officer Stein.
Tony?
Yes.
That's like the I always have to explain my chair.
Yes.
Barb, I did put your jacket on, your chair out.
Oh, I forgot I had my jacket on.
Thank you.
Please stay out there.
We can convene as Board of Commissioners?
Yes. Is regional planning coming up?
Get it.
Did you have Sabrina back there?
No, she just sent me an email.
Okay.
She's not going to be Zooming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Attending?
It's a day, yeah.
Hi, it's Amy. Are you guys ready to come on?
Yeah.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, guys. How you doing?
Morning.
Feel like I'm in a barricade.
Me too.
All right.
You guys are up.
So what we're here today is basically just to ask for your blessing to submit a residential public infrastructure grant, also known as RPIG. It's a grant to help provide sewers to the Chinna Lotman area in the Ravenna Township area. And the cost of that project is $10.1 million. The grant that we're requesting is $750,000. But Water Resources is also using OPWC grant funding and WPCLF funding. So there's no funding coming from the Commissioners. And but we can't submit the grant without you guys' blessing because we don't want to, the state doesn't want to have run amok planning departments or whatever submitting grants without you guys' knowledge. So we have to ask for permission to submit the grant.
So you need this?
Yes, exactly.
I was going to say that.
Okay, well, it's, you know, it's not costing us any money. I don't see what the.
Well, it sounds like a great project, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
It is a huge project.
A lot of people.
Yeah.
How many people, how many households is it?
There is...
Like 400 households or something like that? Or is it 200 households?
170 residential households.
Yeah, almost 200 households.
Okay. Sound good.
Give me a motion.
There's a journal entry right here.
All right. It is moved that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Regional Planning Commission to submit a letter of interest to apply the 2020 Residential Public Infrastructure Grant, RPIG, to Ohio Development Service Agency, Office of Community Development of Chinna Lotman, presented by Regional Planning Commission.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Easy peasy, huh?
How you doing, Tom?
Hey, Chris, how you guys doing?
Okay, NDS. We had two really nice days, so we have to have this rain.
It needs to water the.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll do six. He needs to clear the roads for my motorcycle. It's all.
I tell you, we've had a good March. I mean, we really have. I just hope April doesn't fill us.
My last time in, it was May 6th.
It snows.
Six inches of snow.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it happens. It's Ohio.
Yep. NDS, and that's those grants they're talking about?
Yes, I think.
Do they want to do all of them?
No, they're just going to suggest two.
Two?
They'll explain that when they come in, yeah.
Will we move on anything today?
Uh, yes. We're going to tell them, just give them the okay, I'm not emotional.
Okay. Just a little okay?
Yeah.
They're not here yet because their equipment's at night.
Sure. We do Water Resources?
Sure.
Stay away from everybody until she gets to resolve that.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I was, it's been 9:30, okay. I was a little ahead of myself here.
I hope it's negative.
She said she, sure she does, but the doctor did the test anyway, so.
Yeah.
I saved him, sorry.
You know, and, um, in January, he said, yeah, I have a cold. I have to do it in the morning, though.
Yeah.
I could have over tests, and it was kind of, yeah. And it's, you know.
She's getting Kelly Jo, you want to do your miscellaneous first?
Do who?
Ms. Lang.
Yeah, she's getting Kelly Jo.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Well, let's get back to your miscellaneous then.
Yeah. Page four.
Page four. Ready?
Well, those two journal entries were canceled for Water Resources, so we do the resolutions, Tony.
Which one was it?
Oh, minutes first.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, the minutes. It's moved that the Board of Commissioners approves the March 11th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Roll call aim.
Vicki?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Okay, now, Joanne's not here, right?
Right.
So we're just going to go, okay. Here we are. Here you are.
Here I am.
Morning.
Morning. Well, Kelly Jo was coming on my first agenda item, but she'll be up here in a few minutes.
Okay.
So I'm just going to skip over number one.
Okay.
For now, until she gets here. Um, my, my second agenda item, the performance evaluations for Commissioner staff. Back in January, we discussed evaluations for your directors. Well, we never really discussed evaluations for your direct staff, which is Julie and Amy. So I just want to know, do the director, do the Commissioners want to do evaluations on those two employees?
Yes.
And if so, okay.
We'll look out.
Just wanted to verify.
You want to say, leave it up to you?
Amy wants to do her evaluation really, really bad. Okay, and then the next one, with Judy's retirement as the part-time clerk specialist, do you want to post her position or hold it and think about it? Or what's the Board's desire on that position?
Well, I've talked to Julie and Amy on this, and they really think we need that position just for miscellaneous because they both are tied up in other things. But it can still be part-time.
Yes.
You know, and maybe get someone kind of computer savvy, so they can, what's your...
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, the computer, from everything that I see Julie and Amy doing, the computer is almost an asset. Well, it is a necessity to have somebody with the ability to do such.
Okay, so we will work on.
And Janet, do you think they're cross-trained enough, Julie and Amy? I mean, are they kind of, what are you thinking?
It sounds like they are.
Especially under the lead you had to have.
And maybe this part-time person, you could kind of let her in on some of the things you do, just so.
Yeah.
Right?
That was good for you, wasn't it? Unfortunately, bad for you, but.
She did, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we'll work on that posting. And then the last thing is the travel advisory with the COVID-19, effective March 10th, which was last week. ODH announced that they would no longer issue a domestic travel advisory for those entering Ohio from states with positivity rates of 15% or higher. If you remember, our travel policy, we followed Governor DeWine's advisory last, last year. Whereas if we had an employee traveled to a state that was 15% or higher, they were required to quarantine when they came back, before they returned to work, or if they could tell a worker, whatever. But they were required to quarantine. So ODH has lifted that domestic travel advisory. And pretty much, they're just encouraging those that travel to just to follow the CDC guidance. And the CDC guidance is not mandating quarantine right now. So I'm basically, I'm working on revising the travel policy, and so I'll update it, and then I'll bring the draft back to the Commissioners to review for that.
You know, I'm very positive about where we are, and I know we've had some spikes here and there. But I do really believe that we're on the downside.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking forward to being able to see people.
I know, yeah. Actually, actually talk to people in person.
Exactly. My name, Kelly Jo.
Yeah.
We have.
Good morning.
We're ready for you. Happy we've done loving people in there. Thank you for the drive, especially done the, ask somebody to volunteer, will that be Chris?
Now that Kelly Jo's here, the first item on my agenda was the, and you'll have in your packet, you'll have a memo from Kelly Jo regarding proposed wage increases for her non-bargaining staff. And this is really because, and it was longevity increases and one-year increases, as well as the third-year increase from the Clemens Nelson study. And Kelly Jo can talk more about it, but pretty much, because the bargaining unit members, they received their wage increases according to their unit contract last year. So basically, she's just trying to, you know, propose for non-bargaining.
Can catch up my non-bargaining for 2020. 2021, we still have the freeze for both sides. And then the Clemens Nelson had a third year, they were incremental increases, total $8,000 for that year, retroactive to 1-1. So just would like to give them those increases with your support.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, I'll see you after. I just didn't know if you would have any questions for Kelly Jo, so that's why I asked her.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you.
All right, and then I just have, um, journal entries.
It's moved that the Board of Commissioners approve the probationary removal of Cynthia Leppe, temporary part-time utility building service representative for Portage County Department of Budget and Financial Management, effective March 9th, 2021.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners accepts a retirement of Judith Coleman, part-time clerk specialist for Portage County Board of Commissioners, effective March 22nd, 2021.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners accept the resignation of Shannon Madden, Social Services Worker Three for Portage County Job and Family Services, effective March 15th, 2021.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to authorize a three-day interim position posting of the full-time social worker three, replace Shannon Madden for Portage County Job and Family Services with external posting if no internal appointment is made.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved by the Board of Commissioners agrees to authorize the wage increase for non-bargaining unit employees at Portage County Job and Family Services as posted by the JFS Policy 010-023. These employees were due to wage increase for longevity and third-year wage study increases in the 2020, but did not receive them at the time because of wage freeze. Longevity increase are retroactive to the date they were due in 2020. The wage study increase is effective March 18th, 2021.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the wage increase for Zachary Vernon, laborer of Portage County Water Resources due to passing the EPA Class 1 Watershed Operation Exam. This qualifies him as Watershed wastewater operator and trainer title, effective March 8th, 2021.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
That's it.
Thank you, Janet.
All right, thank you.
Wow, we're ready, that is good. Let's go to the, let's go to the last page four, Tony, with the public bids contract.
Resolution, public bids contract for certain county facilities?
We got NDS here.
NDS is here?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, great. Good morning. Snuck in.
I did.
Yes, you did.
Disguise.
Are you the only one here?
I am.
Okay.
I didn't know if anybody else was coming.
Okay.
Please, come on up.
All right. Which box is it in? Good morning.
Good morning.
You, I hope, got an email?
Yep.
That included this narrative?
Yep.
Yes.
And this is the primary piece of information. You also got a summary?
Yep.
Yes, we did.
Of scoring, and I printed out the full scoring on big paper, just in case you wanted it.
Even on big paper is little, right?
Yes, yes. So the results in front of you are the Portage County Community Development Steering Committee's recommendations from the eight applications that we've received for this particular grant. We've gone ahead and summarized each project and what our recommendation is. There are a couple of, I guess the word would be policy considerations, as you can see on the colored chart, family community services for the King Kennedy Center, and the Shaler's ville trustees being in green, which we're recommending that those projects be funded from the CDPG Housing RLF. The King Kennedy Center being 123, 942. And the Shaler'sville Township demolition of Saniki House, up to $32,000. That parcel, when completed, would be used for a park. In the case of the King Kennedy Center, we were recommending a 0% due-on-sale mortgage to secure the funding. It doesn't require payments, but if something happens down the road, the county is in position to recapture its funding.
Okay.
In the case of the Shaler'sville project, we are recommending 0% due-on-sale up until the point it becomes a park, at which point we are recommending that the, that the funding be forgiven.
Okay.
Since I don't believe it would be generating income at that point. I'm not sure how much you want to go through the rest of them. The write-up does give a little.
Could you do that just for public?
Sure, sure, sure. In the case of the Lovelight project, they were requesting $215,307 in discussions with, with the applicant. Those, that appeared to be more of a contingent commitment that would then be used to go after additional funding. That's a very normal and acceptable thing to do for many funding sources, but for the, for the revolving loan funds, because they don't recapture at a regular rate. We felt that it's better to come in under a fixed project where all the commitments are there and be that final gap piece. That's, that's just the way we look at it.
Sure.
The CAC, number four, looking to put in a park as a Kiwanis project. We think it's a good project, it's scored quite well. The recommendation, though, is that because it's in the city of Ravenna, city of Ravenna also has funding for these types of projects. And so we were going to ask the applicant to approach the city first, and then depending on how that goes, we, we would necessarily return to the Commissioners for a different request or a follow-up request.
Do you have an idea how much money they've raised for that?
They have raised $35,000.
And it's still an additional $50,000?
And then there's another 15 they want to raise. And so we were hoping to work with the city and, and the applicant to generate the remainder of the, again, these forward commitments are not, you know, people do them. It's harder when your pot of money is limited and, and you don't know when you're going to get your next batch of funding. So we were trying to stay away from forward commitments as much as possible.
Right.
But I do believe that the city's got plenty of money, and I think would be more than happy to sit down with, with us and the applicant to get something worked out. Coleman Professional Services for the Phoenix Building, same basic principle, the city does have funding for this type of project. We want to work with, with Coleman on this one. The city's already put in money twice, so I know that, that they're willing to look at this as a, as a project. I also want to talk with the applicant a little bit more about how they're structuring this, because it's, it's really a housing project when you get down to it. And there's home dollars, both at the city and at the county, that are possibly more appropriate than community development block grant. The number six is the Coleman Professional, that's for their office building on Rhodes Road. As far as we can tell, it does qualify as a national objective, although that's making the assumption that they treat clients at that facility. I think they do. But the other side of it is that as a maintenance project, we just, it's not adding to the number of people that they support or additional services or anything like that, which is one of the reasons why we weren't recommending it be funded. The Housing Authority, same basic principle, we think it meets, well, in this case, I know it meets a national objective because they do service folks out of that facility. The biggest issue here is it's so large, it outstrips the money that you have available. And as a water and sewer project, we think that if we do a little work, roll up our sleeves, we may be able to find a way to get this funded more appropriately and not have the revolver take the largest bite out of that.
You think maybe grants would help this, is that, is that a possibility?
Well, yeah, you know, and I'm not the world's greatest expert on issue two or other things of that nature, but I think that, that in order to do this service, I think we need to dig into it.
Okay.
And, and work, and I don't, and again, even if you wanted to, you really don't have the money to do it.
That's a big number, yeah.
And so we want to kind of get that cut down, and, and again, if we find a way and there's a gap to be filled or something, we can reapproach it.
Sure.
To take a look at that. The Habitat for Humanity project, the biggest issue is that it's in the city of Kent, and I, I don't want to get into the weeds on community development block grant funding, but.
Right.
There's really two pots. There's the entitlement pot, and there's the small cities pot. Kent is in the entitlement pot, and the county is in the small cities pot.
Okay.
And you're not allowed to spend the small cities in the entitlement communities.
Okay.
We did call the state, we did confirm that, and so unfortunately, it's ineligible as things stand right now.
Okay, so that's why it's in red?
Yes, that's correct. And then following that, I, we put your, the balance of your, of your fund down, the amount of the funding that we are recommending and the balance that that would leave. Wanted to go and give you a quick summary of the other funds that you have and, and their balances and what they're typically used for. And at very bottom, we're, an additional two notes on the formula grant, which there is no funding this year, those that'll be processed for next year, and then a Nature Works grant that regional planning is working on.
Right.
That's it.
It's, glad you did that for the public and for me.
Understood.
Sure. Amy, do we need a journal entry or something, or is that going to come back next week? Or how is this? Yeah, I mean, you can.
We did not prepare any journal entries because obviously we wanted you to make this.
Sure, sure.
And, and so forth. So we can prepare journal entries for number one and number two.
Yes.
And you can.
Is there any way we could add that to today, Amy, or is it too late?
I would, I would wait.
Wait till next week?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, sounds good, Mike.
All right.
So you want me to come in next week, we'll just do the journal entries, okay?
Outstanding.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good job. Seems like we're bouncing around, where we going next?
I think we should do what we were starting to do before I realized Mike was here, which is?
Public bids?
Yes.
Water resources?
Yes.
You want to start with water resources?
No, because those journal entries are not, we pulled them.
The two underwater, two underwater are okay, the ones that were pulled are on page two.
Oh.
They're both crossed out, like four, five, those.
Three, three.
Yeah.
Oh, seven, eight, nine, and 10, so the water resources, those two are okay?
Yeah.
Because there's four crossed out on page two, and I got an email saying two were being pulled. Okay. As long as we're straight on that.
She has four being pulled.
Yeah.
Seven, the seven, eight, nine, and 10?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and do the water resources, okay?
It's moved that the Board of Commissioners acknowledge and receive and approve the 2020 Portage County Water Quality Report as presented by the interim director, John Vance, Portage County Water Resource Department.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners sign the application and certify for payment for the final payment of $640 with the 2019 Sewer Maintenance Project Program, PC 19-100, payment to Lake County Sewer Company Inc., represented by the Water Resources Department.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Public bid.
Yeah.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into a real estate agreement with Sly Bale Bonds for the property located at 211 South Chestnut Street, Ravenna, Ohio.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into a real estate agreement with DTMIC LLC, Tavern 1888, located on 106 East Main Street, Ravenna, Ohio.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into a equipment lease agreement between Portage County Board of Commissioners and Wells Harbor Financial Leasing on behalf of Portage County Recorder.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to accept and award the bid of Chagrin Valley Paving Inc. for Infirmary Road Realignment and Surfacing Project, HC 164, Section F1, in Shaler'sville and Mandeway Townships, Portage County.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners declares incessantly to lease 15 vehicles for the usage of Portage County Sheriff's Department.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the resolution number 20-0704, General Sewer Agreement for Sanitary Sewer and Water Improvements at Redwood High Point Hills, Portage County Wastewater Department, Project Number BR-20170.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 18th, 2020, bills and ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
2021.
2021.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 18th, 2021, wire transfer for the health benefits as presented by the County Auditor, reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 18th, 2020, journal vouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
2021.
21.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
The Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, March 18th, 2021, then announce certification as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer $735 from Fund 2101, Motor Vehicle Gas Tax Fund, 4248, Infirmary Road Resurfacing.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners acknowledge and receive the Portage County Investment reconciliation for the month of February 2021, received on March 10th, 2021, as presented by the County Auditor and County Treasurer.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners acknowledge and receive of March 12th, 2021, certification of the County Auditor, that total appropriations from each fund do not exceed the official estimate, resources for the financial year beginning in January 2021, as presented by the Portage County Auditor's Office.
Second, roll call aim.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes. We will reset, the sheriff?
Want Kelly Jo?
Oh, she?
She's.
Is she coming?
Sheriff's at 10:30.
10:30.
Kelly Jo?
Is Kelly Jo coming?
I can call her.
Kelly Jo, please.
Yeah.
Hi, it's Amy. Can you send, can you send Kelly Jo up? Thank you. Bye.
Morning ladies, morning.
Morning again. I'm early for my session, I'm going to do my whole.
Perfect.
I just want to make sure. This is why I was pulled up here.
Yep, absolutely.
So on my open agenda to start, I have a presentation of the December-January data report for Job and Family Services. Just a few changes that I want to bring to your attention. On the first page, when you look at the food assistance benefit, the SNAP benefit, you'll see from the month of December 2020 to January 2021, issuance increase of about $800,000 in food assistance. Yeah, but not more, only 200 more people. The federal government increased allotments, food stamp allotments across the country by 15%. So that increase reflects the 15% in the food stamp benefit allotment. So not as many more people, but more benefits being issued because of the food insecurity.
Okay.
So that was page one. And then on page two, where you see the section that says Customer Service Center. So that's our lobby here on the second floor. I just wanted to draw your attention to total client scene. So since we reopened the building in the month of January, we've seen about 70 clients, about averaging 18 per week. Really minimal compared to what it used to be. So a lot of people still are choosing to use technology, which is fine. But we definitely still have that open presence at about 70 people in a month.
Do you make, those people in the lobby make appointments with you?
No, they can walk in.
So just walk?
Yeah, they can ask for an appointment, of course.
Okay.
But if we have copiers and if they want their documents scanned or if they have questions, if they don't have cell phones, absolutely, they can come in and talk to us.
Prior to 2020, what was your?
90 a day.
90 a day?
Yeah, so definitely down, definitely down. Okay. And then just on that bottom section, I think I referenced this last month when I was there, that we knew from recouping benefits for which people were not entitled, we see, we would see an increase because of tax intercept. So you're seeing that we collected about $30,000 in January as opposed to 11 in December. And that will continue over the tax season. I didn't see any changes on page three for Ohio Means Jobs or anything there. But on page four, regarding the impact program, we are collecting better data in that space. This is the program where those individuals that have child support obligations that are underemployed or unemployed, they are now being referred to our Ohio Means Job Center for assistance with work. And so you can see we're getting referrals in that division monthly. We have about 133 individuals we're working with, and they're engaging about 30 people on a month. Cold calls, giving them information about employment, so on and so forth. So new data, good data. And then page five, same program, our comprehensive case management program for youth 14 to 24, numbers are steady there. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It shifted boxes, but we're moving into Child Protective Services and Adult Protective Services on page five and six. In the month of January, we finalized one adoption. And that's great news, that kiddo can have a permanent home at that juncture. We have a few more that you'll see in the coming months. It reports that at the end of January, we had 211 kids in custody. And as of yesterday, we had 196. So we're reunifying kids, and that's good news. But unfortunately, we're still having kids come into custody. But that's our work to assess and ensure kids are safe. So that is Child Protective Services. Any other question in that space before?
You know, when you say they're down to 196, are they going back to the parents? Or are they going, where are they going?
In some situations like this, we had one kiddo that was adopted. So he would come off our rolls. And then yes, they could go to kin, we could close the case. They absolutely would go back to parents in some instances, and we would close the case. So it's, they're making permanent connections. It's just not always, unfortunately, with parents. But we're able to close cases. Okay. And then the last is human resources. Again, this data report's two months off just because of the way some of the state data comes in. But at the end of January, we had 194 employees. We're at 187 now, and that's a result of our hiring freeze. You continue to support us posting those essential positions, and we appreciate that. But we're definitely under about 13 staff, and it is helping us financially. So again, we'll still present some essential positions as needed, though. And that is my January data report. I don't know if you have any follow-up questions on that?
I'm not.
Okay. Then the next is just a memo regarding some changes for our Public Assistance Division. And you'll be getting a press release on the one in the next day or so. So the first is just, we're going to see additional work for our staff. Not additional funds, but additional work. Not additional funds for salaries from the state or the government, but additional work. But that's what we do, and that's what we're paid to do. So Kent State, well, all colleges now are going to be able to see eligibility for their students in the food assistance realm. And that's specifically due to COVID. So before, there weren't exemptions for college students, which made them ineligible. So now because of COVID, there's some eligibility. So Kent State alone has identified 11,000 students in their seven campuses that are potentially going to be eligible for food assistance. Great stuff for them, increase in volume for those counties that have the campuses. So we've already had connections with Kent State. We're doing some trainings with them in the future. But we're going to do our best to get those processed timely. With college students, most are comfortable with technology. So we're going to empower them to apply online, right? And do those things so that, you know, our system is more efficient when we're approving those. So questions on that? Okay. And the last one is what I'm going to send the press release up for you about. So state, Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, our eligibility system that approves all of these benefits is called Ohio Benefits Worker Portal. And it is going down on Thursday, April 22nd through April 27th. So that's four workdays that our staff will not have access to those systems to approve formally benefits. We'll still accept paper applications during that time. We're going to make sure staff have opportunity to be trained. But it could generate more, it's going to generate more calls in our call system. But we're just going to have to explain the situation. The state has sent out press releases, counties are going to send out press releases. So we're going to do our best to just answer the questions. And then as soon as the systems come back up, we'll start processing applications. So you might see some calls up here on this end. We'll deal with them as they come, just put them back my way.
I'll keep this.
So that was the Public Assistance Update Memo. Just moving on briefly, questions on that? To the Child Abuse and Neglect Awareness Month, that's the month of April. So COVID and the pandemic has caused us to shift things a little bit. We used to do a lot of stuff in person in the community, educational sessions and those things. So we're not going to do as much in that space. But we definitely, if you see the picture, we have some billboards in the community with the little guy with his mask on, and it's, you know, promoting fostering children. We also plant pinwheels every year representing kids that have abused, been abused and neglected in Portage. So we're going to continue to take the lead in that space. So you'll see them on lawns throughout the county.
Okay, that's just everybody, a lot of people do that?
Yeah, we do it in conjunction with Children's Advocacy Center. But schools get involved to help us plant, so we get some of the community partners with us. So April 14th, wear blue to work or wear blue in the community. So we're going to be sending some stuff out to the newspapers about promoting wearing blue on that day. I'm just, it's an acknowledgement day for kiddos and the challenges they face. And that's just promoting, you know, this issue and this awareness. So just wanted to bring that to your attention and ask you to please wear blue on April 14th. If you want to take a picture, even if it's not April 14th, yeah, send it to us, and we'll put you on our Facebook page in support of children's services. Questions on that? Okay, so the next big packet, and I won't go into detail. This is a requirement through revised code that communities have child abuse and neglect memorandums of understanding. It's just acknowledging the work and the partnerships that have to surround investigations and work with child abuse and neglect. So there's a House Bill 4, I believe it is, House Bill 4, that's proposing to make changes that would require law enforcement, the reporting requirements to change. And so it has not passed yet. So based on what is passed or not passed, then I will be forwarding this packet up to you all to sign. I'll highlight the new language if it passes. If not, you're just going to acknowledge this as, you know, a lead partner in Job and Family Services or our oversight body, our work. And then at the back, you'll see there's law enforcement there, the prosecutors there. So it's a commitment to reporting requirements and being parties to the processes of addressing child abuse and neglect in communities.
Okay, presently, there's no commitment? Is that what you're saying?
There is a commitment.
Okay.
This has been signed years back, needs to be updated more frequently. But I'm going to update this even if the House Bill doesn't pass. But if the House Bill passes, I'm going to insert some language.
Okay.
So when you see it, I'm just asking for you all to sign it, and then I'll filter through all those other partners on the back.
So when I read this, I had a question of the issue that you've been dealing with. Does that, would that be that kind of issue be in the new version?
Budget issue?
No. One that one child, never mind, I'll talk to you later.
No, but I think that's more of a statute issue, legal issue, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering if that would be covered, something like that would be covered.
Interesting, yes.
Something like this.
Okay.
So don't get confused.
Yeah. So more to come on this MOU. And then last thing is just a discussion. We piloted the manufacturing program here in Portage County three years ago with Kent State. And seven or eight of the manufacturing companies have been exceptionally successful. This year was the first year that when we tried to recruit for the event, we want to start a class, an internship class of at least 10, we only had two interested parties in the community that wanted to sign up. While we don't have facts about this, we do think that some people are still on unemployment and maybe not wanting to make that shift. So in agreement with Kent State, we moved our March class to August. So we're definitely going to send out press releases and continue our efforts to get that class filled, because that's an exceptional program that puts people, streamlines them right into manufacturing. So I just wanted you to know that that kind of went on there.
Sure.
And then Pine Line Properties, that's the lease we hold with Skip Gray for our Ohio Means Jobs Building here on South Chestnut. We engaged in that lease in 2016. And in that lease, when we engaged, we had the deposit and the obligation that we would pay some of the repairs, the lower kind of level repairs. We did not allot enough funds through the contract period to cover all those. So the contract period is ending June 30th, and we are short $4,119.90. So Sue's going to present this, or you, we're presenting this resolution to you formally to pass it so that we can amend it and make sure we have the right appropriation to pay his final month of rent.
What was that amount again? Four thousand?
$119.90. So we present this resolution to you today to be passed. Do you speak, do you want to speak on it? Do you guys speak on it now, or how do you do either?
Well, she, she usually speaks on it.
You're going to do it soon, then you start it then. And that's all I had then.
Okay.
I'll just sit, and then I have two executive sessions, so I'll have to hand that over.
Okay.
No, you have to know it by heart.
Well, I started, okay.
She can't.
And then I have to apologize, I forgot to check agenda, so I don't know what order my resolutions are in.
Well, you know what?
Does it matter?
Just tell us.
Okay.
That's what I have, so try that. Oh, okay, I'll try that. Okay, so it's lease agreement first. So like Kelly Jo said, this was, and this was before Kelly Jo and I were even in these positions. So I'm not even sure how the dollar amount came about. But in, in the lease, it is spoken to that, you know, we're to pay a certain amount of rent each month, and we're to, we agreed to pay the smaller maintenance fees. And however they came up with the dollar amount, it was just short or there were more maintenance fees than, or more maintenance. it was just, um, short, or there were more maintenance fees than, or more maintenance, um, costs than we had expected at that time. So we would like to increase, um, the dollars that are going towards the, um, would be the June rent in the amount of $4,119.90.
Okay, I see that is in the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Tony. Do the resolution.
Effective, it's moved that effective March 18th, 2021. Is that, is there a resolution?
It's the first, right?
Where's the other resolution?
The Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into a lease agreement amendment, right?
Yes.
That's that one? Okay, excuse me. It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to enter into a lease agreement amendment number one between the Board of Commissioners on behalf of Portage County Department of Job and Family Services and Pine Lane Properties LLC.
Second roll call line.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Okay, and number two is our, um, monthly, uh, resolution for our, um, shared costs to pay public assistance back from the WIA fund for January Adjustment Number One and then February of 2021.
Okay, I think we've got the wrong fund number here, maybe, or on our R2.
Is it the 31089?
It says 1413 to fund 1410.
Correct. That's right.
We've got 1415 to fund 1410. Or 14.
There's two, there is another one that's 1415. So the one for 31,000, is that the one you're looking at?
Well, yes, but
So that's the one.
Neither one of them have 1413.
1413 to 1410 is in number two?
Yeah, it's right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Sue.
It's okay, that's all right.
You're, you're going in the right order. I was thinking of all of them, cause I didn't order where you were at.
Okay.
Sorry.
Kelly Jo.
Go ahead, Tony.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer 31,089.40 from Fund 1413, WIA Fund, to Fund 1410, Public Assistance Fund.
Second roll call line.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Okay, and then number three is our regular shared funds transfer from, uh, child welfare to public assistance, and this is, um, payment number five for fourth quarter.
Moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer 90,000 from Fund 1415, Child Welfare Special Levy Fund, to Fund 1410, Public Assistance Fund.
Second roll call line.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
All right, and the last one is our monthly shared cost transfer from child support to public assistance for the month of February.
It's moved the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer 24,047.33 to Fund 1414, Child Support Administration, to 1410, Public Assistance Fund.
Second roll call line.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes. You had them in perfect order, so I was learning all the.
That was Kelly Jo. She had it. Normally, I'd check. Yeah.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second roll call line. What station?
This is, uh, for the Department of Family Services, executive session.
G1.
According to C O R 121, 122, G1, motion to move to executive session to consider compensation for public employee.
Second roll call line.
Tony?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Hey, if you please take your equipment, your camera.